Tonight, our presentations from the architects that we requested a proposal from. We'll go in order if that's okay, if that's fine with everybody. Gary Tiroli-King and King Architects.
Also with Paul Johnson.
Okay.
Hi.
Hi. Good evening.
Good evening, thank you.
The lights are not acceptable?
No, they're fine, we don't have anything on the computer. We just did some boards because of the, you know, small amount of time. We wanted to stay low talk and have this be more conversational. As Gary mentioned, I'm, no, as Carol mentioned, I'm Gary Tiroli with King &amp; King Architects. I'm one of the partners there. With me tonight is Paul, this is Paul Johnson. He's one of our project managers. Those of you who might not be familiar with King &amp; King, we are the oldest architectural firm in the state. We believe we are the third oldest in the country. We're just about approaching our 150th year and we're located in Syracuse.
Good point.
We do a lot of educational work. The bulk of our work right now is, and it has been, is in the K-12 market. We also do some higher education work, so public and private universities and colleges. We have a group that does healthcare, primarily clinical work at hospitals. And then we have a smaller group that does what we call community work. It's our catch-all, everything from wineries to banks and so, candle factory. They have an eclectic mix of stuff. But we really specialize for the most part within our market segment. So Paul and I both exclusively do K-12. I'll turn over to Paul a little bit.
Great, yeah, so.
First word. We had three easels, but we're just gonna switch the boards.
We're just gonna rotate boards.
To make it more awkward.
Great. So, we feel like a key part of any project is really the process. We realize, and we've met with Gary, we came down during an ice storm not too long ago. And schools closed that day, but it was a great opportunity to walk through all of your buildings and we appreciate the time that Gary gave us. And so, we've heard a little bit about some of the work that you're thinking about doing in this next project. At the same time, we, so we're very comfortable with, you know, whether it's new entrances, door replacement, roofing, some mechanical systems. We're comfortable with that, all the way up to, you know, rethinking educational planning and really helping work with your teachers and principals and thinking about how you're teaching, how you're adjusting to new standards and 21st century learning, you know, all those buzzwords that we hear about collaboration, integration. So really, how does, how does the classroom support all that? So, that's a big span and we're comfortable and we enjoy working in all of those, those areas, both big and small. Really, the key through all of that is a process where communication is the key. We really, in the beginning, want to, as we're working with the district, wanna hear from you about your values, what you need in your building, if it's very pragmatic, things we're trying to solve, we wanna listen to that. And then, from there, we'd start to bring some solutions to you, depending on the scope of work and the size of things we're talking about. We could start to bring examples, precedents we call them, so we can show you what other districts are doing and really sort of help you, at least, we feel like part of our role is to at least challenge what you're doing. Ultimately, it's your building and it's what works best in Canada-Jerry. And what's going on at your neighbors may not be relevant here, but we wanna at least have that conversation and just say, "Are you aware of this?" And so, that's sort of the steps we go through. And then finally, we reach a point where we're ready to put things on paper and start talking about architecture. But often, it starts well before that and we need to really hear from you about what you're trying to achieve, so.
The biggest piece for us is building a relationship. When we go into a new district for us, it's not a one-and-done project. We have a handful, several clients that have 20, 25-plus-year relationships where we've been their district architect. So, you know, we want tonight to be our first meeting with Canada-Jerry, to really get to know you guys, to understand what your values are, what's important to you, to your staff, to your students, and to be here for the long haul and to continue to develop that. You know, capital construction in school districts, it's difficult. You have a lot of things that you have to contend with, your operating budget, programs. And so, you may want to do all of these wonderful things to your buildings and you can't necessarily do it in one shot. Helping you plan that out, you know, you may have been part of the building condition surveys that happen every 10, 15 years. You know that there's a body of work in 2010, 2015, every five years. You know that there's a body of work that needs to be tackled. And if you can't do it in this capital project, you know, how can we phase this in appropriately so that the workout gets done when it needs to get done? Our goal is to build those relationships and to be here for 10, 15, 20 years of helping with that.
A final piece of that is, so we're just an architectural firm and we feel that that's an advantage and you may even be interviewing groups tonight that are architectural and engineers under one roof. But we prefer to be able to hear what your needs are and then select consultants that can specifically address that. So if there are specialties, we can bring in those key people that are experts in that area.
Yeah, it's really to clients' advantage. Our consultants, they're working for you, they're working for Canada-Jerry, but they're also working for us. And so, if a mechanical design team isn't delivering, they're not working with us anywhere else at any other district versus having the people in-house. The other advantage to that is because they are working as engineers or landscape architects or environmental engineers with other architects, they also see other things that are happening. So they provide additional enrichment to the conversation. You know, it's, we're not operating in a vacuum as a full-service AE team. We have a lot of different input, a lot of different experiences, so.
So, we wanted to take an opportunity and just take one area of your building, one of the things we heard that day we walked around with Gary and just put something on paper and just be able to talk about your buildings a little bit here. So, the one key thing we heard about was some entrances and specifically the, at the middle school. And so, we just quickly did a diagram where one of potentially many solutions would be to potentially move the current office where it's at to the end of the wing for better views, a more secure entrance. So, one of those key things where I talked about other consultants and all is, so this is an area where obviously a lot of districts are talking about security and what that means to each district has varied a lot. But we have a consultant that we can lean on who is really being used by the FBI at the moment across the country for these, to really set sort of the standard or set the bar for best practices. And so, we can at least bring you those best practices and even if you wanted to take a step further and have a security analysis of your campus, there's a lot of ways that could go. But, so we can always start at sort of that best practice level and then again, through conversations, you know, tailor that to what works for you. So, and really, it's all about a balance of the safety of the students, the ability of the people in the office to be able to monitor what's happening and properly address who's coming in and also just that user experience of parents coming to the building and, you know, just being aware of that. We do know you have visitors coming in all day and it needs to at least be an inviting entrance, you know. It can't feel, I guess, prison-like, metal detectors or what have you, so.
Our friends at SED. It's been a while since you guys may have had a capital project, right, our understanding? I don't know if you've heard in your neighborhood communities what things are like at SED, facilities planning right now, but there's been a lot of changes there. There is a new director, the acting director has been appointed the director. A lot of the project managers have retired or in the process of retiring and they have a lot of new staff there. We are really in, I think, a very fortunate position because we do so much K-12 work. We do have really strong relationships with the people that are remaining there. They are tapping us, if you will, I think, as a resource to help even train some of the newer project managers. So, we had an hour and a half long conference call with Rose Androv on Tuesday to help come up with strategies to expedite some of the submission process and the review process because it's back up to almost nine months. So, you know, I do like to share that with people, that we are experts in the K-12 arena with the SED piece, we have really excellent working relationships there. We know how to maximize your money. We know how to get you the most that you can possibly get with your aid ratio and how to leverage, you know, that local share that you might have to cover to be creative with ways to do that. If it's found a phasing, if it's, you know, looking at retiring debt, if it's playing with reserves or fund balance, if you, you know, some districts are fortunate enough, depending if you're the auditor or not, to have some fund balance. But I think that piece of the equation really sets us apart from some of our competitors, the way that we're able to use money, to use your money, to maximize your money, to get you the most possible. So, you know, that full, that service, it's more than just a nice design. It's more than solving your problem, it's all of those pieces. We know you might have questions for us. Do you have standard questions?
Yes.
Just one, go ahead, yes.
One question. I like your concept about not having it be prison-like, you know, but I was wondering, could you just expand on that a little bit more about how you would conceptually think about that?
Sure, sure. So, some of those best practice ideas are, and you may have it here already, I'm trying to remember as we entered. So, often, you want the outer doors to be locked. If you have to view them on a camera, that's okay, but it's always better to be able to have whoever's in the office managing that front door to be, to have a clear view to them. It's really best for them to have a really a good view of the site, the larger site and the parking lot, just to be able to see who's coming to the building. And so, the sooner they maybe, sort of a red flag goes off in their head that there's an issue here, the sooner the better. You really wanna give that person at the front desk the opportunity to sort of talk to or interview that person as they come in as long as possible or at several sort of steps or occasions. So the first one being at the door when they ring the buzzer to come in, the next one would be at the window. This is where some districts sort of differ with each other, it's that once you come in the building, what are you being presented with? Some literally have people behind bulletproof glass and it's more of sort of a bank teller, you know, the little slot under the glass and the microphone in between. That's what's being recommended.
Which is not so inviting.
Not inviting, right?
Welcome to Canada-Jerry's.
You know, so the other options are sliding windows or some type of window, some way to close that off. But again, so however you, whatever you're comfortable with as a district, you still have someone coming in in sort of a contained area within the building, so at least they're not out in the elements, you're able to talk to them. And then they're either passing through the office and out into the building if they're allowed to progress forward, or they're waiting in the office for someone to come get them, which again, just in your procedures is another best practice to whoever they're coming to see, come to the office, gets them, takes them to wherever they're going in the building. People aren't, visitors are not walking through your buildings unattended. The other option, if you're not walking through the office, would just to be in sort of that vestibule, the interior vestibule doors would be locked and then again, those would be on a buzzer as well. And there's even concepts of, as that person leaves that window and walks to go through those doors, that you actually want the door that you're unlocking to be the farthest door across. So as they turn and walk across, if they were holding anything behind their back that would potentially be used as a weapon, that again, you have the opportunity to see that and lock that door down. If your building has any sort of panic button system, you would hit that as well. Again, that can operate a series of things. Often, we see them shutting the smoke doors that are in your hallway, so it's just a way to begin to partition off your building. There's really, there's some different types of films or glass that you can put in all these entrances, that you can go from the most extreme of bulletproof to something that's pretty practical, which is called in, sort of intruder-proof, where they can shoot it and beat on it, what have you. There's all kinds of demonstrations of this guy who lives out near us, he's a, he's this former MMA fighter and the guy's just a tank and he works for the sheriff and he has access to like AR-15s and machine guns and everything.
And you can't get in.
They show him just doing anything he can to this door and he goes to failure. They always test these things to failure, but I mean, it takes this guy like 40 minutes to go through this. So, you think about those levels of partitioning and separation in your building and it really gives people time to exit the building. If you know the intruders at the entrance, you know, it gives them time to come out. And they, they come with a lot of great research on, you know, what's happened, what we know and it's really interesting data. You know, one of those things is that, you know, a person who's coming to do harm and it's usually someone, we just heard about it in the news, you know, someone had an issue with their ex-wife and came to the school to deal with that, that's usually the thing. And for whatever reason, they always come to the front door. There's really no instances where they're, where they're coming to the loading dock. Things like Columbine are the rarity, they don't fit the mold of all the other incidents. So, there's a lot to it. And so, we'd love to be able to share that and then find sort of what fits. I hope I didn't ramble on too much about it, but.
I have a very different question, I think. Is the model that you use that you would be the lead architect for the account, so do you use an account model where basically we have a face that?
Yeah, it would be, yeah, it would be Paul and I. Obviously, we would have a team of people behind us at King &amp; King, but that relationship piece, it's important. That said, it would be two people because, you know, we also, we're working with a couple of other districts, each of us, so if you need something, Gary needs Paul and he can't get ahold of me, Gary picks up my cellphone. But we're your team, start to finish. We do know that some firms have a team that does say the pre-referendum work and even into the design, and then when you get into construction, they have a different group of individuals who might pick up construction, but that's not how King &amp; King operates, start to finish.
So, it's the two of you all the way through the project?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Then I have a related question. On the bio-sheet that they gave on you, the last thing I saw on there was a 2015 project. What have you done since then?
Oh geez, it may not be updated. Right now, I'm working with the Central Valley School District. They are renovating all four of their buildings that are merged, if you're familiar with Central Valley, so that's a significant project of renovations and additions. That project cost $73 million. I have a few projects in pre-referendum right now, the Solida Union Preschool District, the Sands Creek School District, I'm working with Herkimer Fulton Hamilton at Seagobosse's right now on a project, it's a little bit different because they don't go through a typical referendum process, they do intermunicipal, I think that's.
That's fine.
Yeah. We're doing some stuff.
The last question I have, what is the longest relationship you've had with a customer?
Personally?
Yep.
Well, I've been with Central Valley, which was previously, I had Mohawk. King &amp; King had Mohawk and Alien, so when we merged, we were fortunate enough to stay with Central Valley. I've been with them for 12, 13 years, 12 years. But that was my first year at King &amp; King. So, my tenure at King &amp; King, I've been at Central Valley.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Great.
Well, thank you very much.
Thanks for your time. Nice to meet all of you.
You too.
Thank you.
Are you ready? Brian Manning from CSR type, let's all introduce the rest.
First, thank you for having us, we really appreciate Dr. Kennedy to interview here tonight. We did a walkthrough with Gary several months back, Kathleen and I came to that walkthrough. Did you get a good understanding of what your scope is gonna be for the project? So, I have a big group here today. Starting here with Ed Anchor. He's a principal at the firm and he'll be the project manager for the project.
I'm Kevin Schaefer, I'm Director of Engineering for CSR.
I'm Catherine So, I'm a building designer at CSR.
I'm Kimberly Relie, I'm Senior Interior Designer at CSR.
Travis Mitchell, I'm with Environmental Design Partnership, a subconsultant at CSR on the site civil work.
Are we too close, too far?
Is it on?
Oh, on, the button that says on.
There you go.
Look at that fine-looking group. We've already done the introductions. One of the things we wanna focus on tonight is your secure entrances. It's pointed out as a major issue in the district and it's the number one priority as we walk through, so we wanna get into that a little bit. Talk about some of the additional items on your priority list and then talk about why you should hire CSR, if you haven't thought of doing it already, something. Let's start. Elementary school, the issue is, not good. Okay, so when we create secure entrances, there's two ways to do it. One is to allow people to come into a vestibule and into the main office, sign in and get buzzed into the building. We don't prefer that scenario because that, there's a bad character, they're already inside the building by the time they get checked in and license scanned and things like that. So I'm gonna show you schemes where we don't do that. What we like to do is use a transaction window. You create a vestibule, you already have the vestibules in most cases, and we've altered them. So you come in the first door, you get out of the weather, you're allowed to come in the first door. And there will be a transaction window, as you can see in the drawing on the top, right there. So a transaction window is just simply a window that has a drawer, allows you to speak to people and allows you to have them sign into the building and get their license, et cetera. And you do that behind glass so that if you have a problem with this individual, they're not inside your building. And then they get buzzed into the second set of vestibule doors. So, in the elementary school, it's a pretty simple thing to provide that window. The office is right in the right place where you want it to be. And also, what you would do in that scenario is reconfigure the furniture in the main office so that someone has to be sitting at this window. You can't have people sitting 30 feet away from the window and be the person that's checking people in, they really need to be right there. So we would alter the furniture on the inside of the building, as we show on the right-hand side, to provide a counter for somebody could work and be the watchdog at that window. The middle school is a little more challenging because the office is not at the entrance. So, what we would recommend to you is the same scenario of a vestibule, a window and being buzzed through to the second door, but in this case, we would propose to move the office, the main office, down to the corner of the building so that the main office function is at a secure entrance. So then we would take the classroom that exists in that space and move it up to where the office is now. Another part of that that we would need to talk to you about is whether the rest of the functions, the guidance functions and those would also move and therefore you'd have two classrooms on the top side of the drawing. So that's, those are details to work out.
Another view of the same thing from the other direction, just highlight the guide suite and the main office at the other end of the corridor. Kathleen is our architectural designer and she actually put all these runnings together based on the plans that we had from, that we were provided. Did a great job.
I think so. I think so. Okay. So the high school is also well set up for a secure entrance. You already have a window in place, but it's a fixed window and not a transaction window. So if you could simply change that into a transaction window and then rearrange the furniture again as we show here so that someone is assigned to be at that desk while school is open, and then you can put the electronics on the doors and create that at very low cost, because it's pretty much set up right now for a secure entrance, even though it's not right now, so.
So Kim is our expert space planner and actually our furniture guru on the team. So she's gonna be the one kind of dealing with a lot of the things of the reconfiguration of spaces, she's had experience. Do you wanna mention anything about some of those spaces now, or?
Yeah, actually, you know, it looks like there's gonna be a mix of potentially of built-in casework versus furniture and in the furniture, we would consider obviously furniture that's available on New York State contract for your district and I have about five years, personally about five years of experience just working in furniture, so I'm familiar with a lot of vendors and a lot of the different price points and ergonomics as far as the people who would be sitting and attending the window as well as, you know, as an interiors background. So I will help with the fit and finish of the overall space once the spaces are reconfigured and consider things with ADA as well as slip resistance and that sort of thing.
It's important for us to make sure that we're having, you know, upfront and immediate interactions with people who are gonna be working and using these spaces. So clearly, what we're showing here is a first blush at something that may or may not work, but we wanted to come prepared to kind of show what we can, what our capabilities are. But I think that, you know, given the capabilities that we have, there's a lot of different solutions, but we wanna meet with those folks directly to kind of key in on the most important parts of that.
Kevin, what's the next?
Yeah, so one of the scope items was to upgrade controls and that can mean a lot of different things. So I think what we would, we would do is sit down and really find out what it is your goals are. We don't have a lot of time, but you know, it'd be nice to, you know, to find out what you're looking to do and achieve. And we have different ways of doing that, but you know, our goal would be to maximize the value and really to make things as simple and straightforward as possible. One of the really, the challenges with control, upgrading controls is to find a vendor that you like working with and then to bring them into the process. One of the, one of the ways we could procure these systems is to go to bid. And then, once we go to bid, we lose control over, you know, we could lose control over who would be the low bidder essentially. So one of the, one of the ways we've tackled this and had success recently is to bring, is to work with the district, identify who the vendor, the vendors you wanna work with and then, you know, narrow that down and possibly go through an interview and mini-bid process and then bring them into the design team. Because a lot of what the control people do is actually engineering a complex system, it's a lot of custom software in some cases and, you know, we wanna work with them as part of the team to make sure that we achieve your goals as simply and straightforward as possible and not have a lot of extra bells and whistles that you don't need. So by doing that, we ensure that you're gonna get what you want, they're part of the design team, so everything's fully integrated. And, you know, and then the rest of the parts and pieces would be just, say, controllers would be like buying a laptop, something that we would buy off the state contract or there's different avenues of doing that. So there's lots of different things that we could do, but you know, that's what our goal would be to sit down and work closely with the team here and, you know, figure out what the best approach is. Thank you.
Great, so there are a lot of other items on your priority list and we won't get into nitty-gritty of a lot of those, but we know that some of those are dealing with the roof and doing assessment and figuring out what makes sense to repair and go to replace. We get into kind of, when we start to take information from the district, one of the first things that we do is look at the vintages of all the rooms surrounding the area, what's under warranty, what's not, and how to kind of formulate an approach that kind of encompasses all of those. Exterior door replacements, hardware replacements, video cameras, all kind of hearken around the security of the building, making sure that those doors are properly hardened, making sure that the interior door hardware is accessible and also making sure that that interior door hardware is set up for safety within the building in the event of an unfortunate event. And then, video camera upgrades and replacements, a lot of the, a lot of the districts did a lot of video cameras over the years. Technology that exists now is so much better and so much more user-friendly, as it were, than was previously available and frankly, in a lot of ways, a lot more affordable. The price of that technology is coming down. We would kind of do an overall assessment of the safety and security of the building, where are your blind points, where are points that work well, and then how to enhance those throughout the building. The other items on the list, we had a lot of site work and I guess Travis is our site work consultant. We had track resurfacing and some of the outside sites, but did you wanna speak at all a little bit?
It looked pretty straightforward, you know, we would, we would work with Gary and facilities members. One of the, one of the points I noticed with circulation around the building and that's something that we've looked at in some other districts as we've considered if that made sense or not. Certainly, we'd work with you to understand the priorities and move that forward.
So we've gotten right to your project. So we've gotten right to your project and shown us that we have an understanding of what you're looking for. Haven't spoken a lot about our firm, which I might not be familiar with. In the proposal, the whole story of our firm is in there, as you've flipped through it. We are a K-12 firm, about 90% of our work is K-12, we've been around for 25 years. We're in your neighborhood, we're at Glover'sville, Johnstown, Broad Alvin Perth, along with 30 or 40 other school districts in the state. And Johnstown and Broad Alvin, we're doing the secure entrances as we described here in all of their buildings. We're also doing the temperature controls as Kevin described at Broad Alvin Perth with a single vendor and a state contract. So we're around here, we have a lot of experience, we have our own in-house engineering, in-house interior design. So that helps us streamline the project. We offer construction management if you're interested in that. We are doing construction management in Johnstown and Broad Alvin Perth on $40 million projects there. That's up to you. We only do CM on projects where we're hired as the architect. The other thing is, we like to have long-term relationships and we like to be your architect and not the architect that's doing a project for you. So when we get hired as an architect, we really want to be your advisor, be your guide. Help you with all things inside and outside of the project and be your resource. We work hard at that and you can call any of these clients and ask them about it. But I'll point to North Colony School District. They've been a client of ours for 25 years. They do projects every year, so we've done more than 20 projects there. We have a $100 million project going for go in May. And that's what we're all about, is servicing a client and keeping the contact, providing great service and being your architect where you don't think about having to go run RFP next time you have an issue. Also, in between the projects, you're comfortable calling us with issues, problems and things. And we are not nickel and dimes, we'll help you out if we're your architects, so I just wanted to say that. We probably took our 15 minutes now. Do you want to have some questions?
I hope you have some questions.
I think you said that you would be the principal on this project.
I will be, yeah, I will be the project manager, so I, Brian's our principal in charge.
I'm the principal in charge, I'm the director.
Right, I'm also a principal of the firm and a part owner in the firm. But I would be the day-to-day contact and the good person.
So you'd be the architect and you'd be the project manager?
Essentially, well, we're all architects, but yeah, that's essentially how it would work.
For this project?
Yep, yes, yep. Now, when we start the project, I mean, I will be the one kind of facilitating those meetings, getting early meetings set up. And I will bring my, our team members in as necessary, depending on what phase of the product we're at, what needs to be done. We have some people that specialize in programming, early phases and early design phases of the project. We have other people that specialize in doing some of the nitty-gritty and the field work. But we all work as a team. And typically, the people that start on that team are the same people that you will see all the way through to the end and even in the construction. So we don't shift teams all that often, you know, it doesn't happen. So I would be the person that you're going to see probably more often than not. And you will see me straight through till the keys get turned over and everybody's happy. And that's pretty important, that's the way we like to work. It's really challenging for districts when you're turning over the staff that you're dealing with on a regular basis. Full disclosure, this classroom is where my little brother teaches in, Mr. Anker is my baby brother. Yeah, I was talking to him, you know, a couple of days ago and he's like, "So you're going to be at the board meeting?" He's like, "That's in my room, you should..."
We thought he was going to write "Go CS Arch" on the board.
We did and we cleaned it and cleaned it up.
That's all said. But yeah, no, I mean, that's, you know, we all, it's interesting because we all work in districts all over the state. And a lot of the districts that we work for are districts where we have direct contact and direct ties. So it's, you know, beholden upon us to make sure that we're servicing those clients the best possible way. Like, for instance, right now, I'm doing a project where my daughter's going to start kindergarten this year. I'm going to put an addition on that school and I know, and everybody knows where I live. And they all have pitchforks and torches, so if things don't go well, it's not a good thing. So we have a vested interest in the districts that we work in and we like the long-term relationships and the partnership. And it's a pretty nice room. It's not bad. It's going to get some more art on the wall or something.
Any other questions?
We get it familiar with discount?
Everything's negotiable.
I totally had to keep them, you know, questions to and answers off.
Well, okay, I'll... You know, it's kind of a tension that I feel and I think we all feel. Is to increase the security in our school district without having a fortification mentality. Because we really want to encourage parental engagement. And, you know, we don't want to put up, you know, this fortress, like this, this is a foreign institution.
You are absolutely correct. That's one of the biggest challenges that we face. I think, you know, one of the things that we are constantly, kind of unfortunately undoing in a lot of districts is we put in this secure vestibule. And the staff and the administrators in that particular space are just buzzing the door. Because they can't see what's going on or they can't, they're not interactive enough with the people before they get into the space. So that's really the challenge, to make sure that the, not only from a physical plan standpoint, but from an administrative side standpoint. That the people who are going to be operating those spaces are given the opportunity to weigh in on how they're going to work in those spaces. So they're not just buzzing the door when they hear the doorbell go off or when they, you know, kind of glance at the security camera. So they can have that interaction with people. But again, we don't want to do things that are going to make people's jobs harder. You know, we want to make people's jobs easier, but at the same time make them more secure. And there are multiple strategies that can be enlisted in that. Sometimes it's security cameras, sometimes it's doorbells with video camphasing. The transaction window scheme like Brian mentioned tends to be more effective because that person who's sitting behind the transaction window is having a conversation with the person before they're allowed to come into the building. And they have to in order for that person to be able to come in. So they're not just, again, buzzing the door, finding people in.
I think too, on that point, I think people are used to having to check in before they get in the building now. It's becoming more the norm. And it's really not fortress-like in this case because you already have the vestibules and they wouldn't change, they look the same. Just when you came in, you have to check in before you go through the next door. So it doesn't have that barbed wire kind of situation or anything like that. So you could check East Green Bush Schools, we just did seven secure entrances and they came out very nice, I think they're in the proposal. But if not, I could give them credit.
So conversely, some of the districts that we work in, I can cite Kingston Central Schools as a, or even Newburgh Central Schools, they kind of want a fortress, unfortunately. They're in those situations where they have to operate in those windows. So we kind of see all ends of the spectrum, you know, from the inner-city school districts that really have to have that level of security where they have a whole security staff. Down to the, you know, the more rural school districts that have one person who's responsible for operating that door and making sure that people are being checked in properly. So we find that it really is a multi-pronged approach. It's not just a one-shot solution. And just putting a transaction window in helps, but it's not the ultimate solution. And it's really, it comes down to conversations with the people that are going to be using it.
I think sometimes too, just to add to that, we, you know, we get caught up in what we do every day and then sometimes we realize like people may not be as familiar with, you know, even the programs that we're building the building in. So if, as you can see from the renderings that Kathleen put together, you can really get a sense of what the space will look like, given the program that we do our drafting. And drafting used to be a lot more 2D and now we have 3D capabilities, which also helps when we're coordinating our NEP and our site work so that we're all coordinating the building together. I'm sorry, the engineering, mechanical, electrical. So, you know, so you guys are really able to be an integral part of the process. We're not just putting together a building and you don't really get a sense of how it's going to feel ultimately when it's done. You can actually get right into the building, you can kind of get a sense of you're standing there, what the space could feel like and look like, so.
One of the things that we hear a lot when we go in the school districts, which is really kind of unfortunate, is we start having these interactions with, usually with the superintendent and the business official at the start. And then we start to encourage them to bring in those key people from different members of the staff at different times and sometimes incorporate, sometimes not. But invariably, when we meet with those people, they said, "During our last project, no one even came to talk to us. No one even asked us for what we wanted or what our painting was." And we end up having to undo a lot of the things that were done without having involvement of the staff and the teachers and the students that are going to be, and students too. I can see you're here, that's good. It's important to have that student interaction in some of these spaces as well. Less so on an infrastructure project. But, you know, even when we start talking about things like HAC system upgrades and that, there are ways to incorporate that into curriculum. There's building management system software that can be, you know, used as a part of a mechanical or an electrical or engineering program within a district. So we've had some success with that too. But it really comes down to making those interactions with the students and the staff and the administrators kind of happen more fruitfully throughout the process. And it's a process, it takes a long time, it takes a lot of work, but that's...
It's really nice that we're all in house together. Because I walk by these guys' desks, you know, multiple times a day and design can be a messy process.
Whether you want to or not.
Just getting these light pendants and the diffusers and everything in the right place, so you don't have a pendant that wants to drop out of the user. It's really nice, I've been on both sides of the fence, I've had my own consulting firm. And I've been with them for seven years now and grown an in-house engineering firm. And I think it really helps us to achieve higher results in the design. And we just, we can bump into each other and GNIID pops into our head and we can go back and forth on things. Whereas you're an outside consultant, sometimes it takes a lot of initiative to overcome those hurdles. So that works well.
When we point the finger, it kind of goes in place. Unfortunately, there's no pointing fingers when you're all working in the same space. But, you know, it's good, we, you know, and when we do construction management on projects, we like to say we kind of have a healthy skepticism of our other disciplines and our other trades. We're constantly checking out on each other, but we work really well together at the same time.
Well, hopefully not to look for a GRCM is in-house as well, so.
Right. There's only, one quick thing I want to clarify that might be rather boring, but it's important, I think, before we're done, and that's the fee. So we were told there was a $5 million project and we based the fee on a $5 million construction project. And there's a fee schedule in your proposals, depends on the construction costs, what percentage, et cetera. We use that same fee schedule for every school district we work in, unless there's something unique about the project. And so if you have a $5 million project, the construction cost is lower, it's around $4 million. And I sent an email to that effect that instead of a $4.75 fee, it would be $3.80 if the whole project was $5 million. That fee that was quoted was for $5 million construction. Just wanted to clarify that so that we're on the same plane with everyone else. Do you understand that? Okay, thanks.
One of the other things that we pride ourselves on is our interaction with the state education department. There's been a lot of changes up at the Hill over the last couple of years with Carl Fano retiring and some of the changes there. But over the years, we've developed such a good relationship with the people that are running the show there and we've kind of maintained that over time. You know, we deal with a lot of challenges with the amount of reviews that they have to do on a daily basis. So we try and strategize how we put products together, how we deliver our services, so that when we get to the point where we're ready to submit a project to SED. We can kind of play it out so that we get to the point where you want a better project at the right time, you get the right bidders, you're kind of on the pavement at the right time. Last thing, we want us to have projects coming out in May or June for a bid, when you know you're going to have contractors that are either bottom-of-the-barrel guys or have already got enough work and throwing huge prices at bidding. So the fact that we have a good relationship with SED and we kind of work through that process is something that we do pretty well. We've been doing it pretty well for a long time.
And Ed said "up the hill" because our office is just about three blocks down the hill from where we're working.
Yeah, literally, we're walking up the hill.
So we're talking about the people up the hill. Always nice.
You don't always talk to anyone.
Full disclosure, sometimes we have the same comments. But it's gorgeous and professional and, you know, like I said, we've worked with some of the people that work up at SED, you know, for the better part of then 15 years. So we have, you know, direct lines of communication with them and we call them on a daily basis a lot of times when we need to say, "Hey, listen, is this going to be okay? Can we do this? Are you going to be okay with this on this particular project?" Because invariably, there's a lot of things that are the same about school districts, but there are a lot of things that are different and independent and very, very, you know, involved at different districts. So it's critical that we find that out and we play those pieces of the puzzle.
Thank you.
No problem. Thank you so much for having us.
Thank you.
Very much. This is Eric Kaminski from the SEI Group and he'll introduce the others. I'm Eric and we're going to go through introductions again in a second. And I'm going to pass it right to Matt Monahan, who's out of our Albany office, I'm out of our Davidson office. So Matt, I'll let you kick off.
Okay. We will start very quickly with our presentation. I am Matt Monahan, I'm a senior principal with SEI Design Group. And Eric, you know...
Mike Eckhart from McFarland Johnson, based out of Baton Rouge, New York.
Hi, my name is Mike Kurzak, I work with the LA Group and we're based out of Saratoga Springs as well as Ithaca, New York.
I'm going to let you go, I'm going to pass off some... Chief, she's perfect, remember who we are. Okay, sure. I don't think he went grocery list.
SEI Design Group was formed in 2006, so 11 years ago, by myself and five partners. And two of those partners have retired since that time, but we're a very flat company. So a senior principal is involved in every project and involved right through the project. We are dedicated to our client satisfaction. That's what it's all about. So it's your project, it is your budget, your voters, and we put together something that works for you. We're here to help facilitate that. We're all K-12 design, that's what we do. We're in over 60 school districts in New York State and we have a very good relationship with SED. So we definitely would like to work with you to put together a project that works with your budget, that works with your educational program. That you can get out to the voters and have them understand that there's a need to do this. There's a real need to support what you want to do. Basically, we would look at all the data that you have, your building condition survey. Any information that you've put together. And then put together a plan, work with you and your facilities committee or whatever your structure is here. And we would provide creative solutions from the design side, from the fiscal side, from the state aid side. Because what we really want to do is put together a package that's going to get you the most value for the dollar, for the taxpayer dollar. For your educational program needs that you can possibly get. And that really happens with three different key components. So long-term goals, flexibility. Because whatever we do needs to really take you through, you know, anywhere from, you know, five years to 30 years, I mean, or 50 years. I mean, we go into buildings, you've got a gorgeous facility here and it's fairly new. But, you know, really, school districts oftentimes go for a long period of time before they do major changes. Stakeholder input, we're going to be looking to you to see what are the solutions that we come up with. And we've put together some ideas based on the meetings that we've had here that we'll get into in a little bit. Financially sound plan, that's critical. That goes from the planning phase for your maximum aid capacity. On newer buildings, we have to look at the aidability and how we structure that with SED. And then once we pass a vote, we need to make sure that we're following that program. Because when you go to close out the project, at the end of the project, everything needs to align with what you set up in the beginning and a balanced approach.
So I'd like to talk to you about the LA Group. We're a company that's been in business for 40 years plus. As I mentioned, we have offices both in Saratoga Springs and Ithaca, New York. As I mentioned, we have offices both in Saratoga Springs and Ithaca, New York. We've worked in over 40 K-12 school districts over the years. However, I've been doing this a long time. I worked for another company before I went to start working with the LA Group a number of years ago. I probably worked with over 200 K-12 clients in New York State. So I know a little bit about the work that you've done. One of our specialties, I know that one of the things that you're looking for is possibly redoing your track. Have experience doing that. We did, we renovated a track just down the thruway in Canostota last year, or two years back. We finished renovating the project down at SUNY Oneonta. If anybody knows the athletic director down there, Tracy Rannieri, please call her, because I think she'd give you an idea of what we're like, both my company and what I'm like as a person. And I'm your project manager for the project, if we're lucky enough to get the project for you. Other things that we do from the site civil and the landscape architect side, I do a lot of pavement. I drove all your pavement before I came into the meeting earlier today, watched a little bit of your baseball game. And so we know that asphalt walks, transportation facilities, drove around your bus garage, so we know a little bit about that as well. And if you want to do any playgrounds, I've done a lot of playgrounds over the years, too. So I'll just pass on to Mike Eckhart.
Before we pass it off, you were humble and didn't mention that you're a baseball coach.
Yeah.
For Lansing, and he's a former board member of Lansing Town.
Again, Mike Eckhart from McFarland Johnson. Along with having some extensive experience on the educational side, we bring in some aspects from outside of the K-12 arena that could be helpful in an educational environment. We do a lot of work in aviation facilities, so when you're talking about security for, you know, audiovisual surveillance or for access control of your building, that's something that we have a very keen sense for how to apply that. On the mechanical side, we are working with the state of New Hampshire, doing commissioning of new buildings and even retrocommissioning, meaning we go back into existing buildings where the mechanical, electrical plumbing systems aren't functioning properly. We help them analyze how to optimize the systems they have and find where the faults lie, and work with contractors to correct those issues. And even when we walked through the facilities with Gary, I happened to notice, just walking around, that there was some scaling on some points, and I asked if there was any issues with hard water. And he said, actually, yeah, that's something that we didn't necessarily think about, but yeah, we have a little hard water issue. So the five-year plan and the building condition survey obviously gave us a good guideline as to what to look for, but whenever we walk through a building, our eyes are always open for what else we can do to help, from a mechanical and engineering side, how can we optimize your systems for both reliability and from a maintenance perspective, so.
Thanks, Mike. Before I get into the solutions for the different entries, I wanted to talk about a couple of things. The reason we put the team together is because we've all worked together in the past, and we think that we're a strong team for you. I don't know how many years you've got, 10, 15, together working, so it's a good relationship. And I think, because I trust these guys to do what they're responsible for, I think that'll play out to you and how you guys look at us. These two boards just represent, and I'm not going to dwell on them at all, the fact that we've walked through with Gary and understand what's on the list right now, and I might put together some quick options on what the track could be and how field events might be relocated to help optimize what you've got, potentially think about what you're going to do with the D zones and how you brand the new field or a track to make it yours. We're going to start at the elementary school, but you're going to notice similarities between all three schemes, and that's because we wanted to take a quick approach, and this is not our plan, it's just an idea. It's easy to solve the secure vestibule piece of things, and you're going to see that similar approach where you walk into a vestibule that's locked down, and there's a door into the office, so that you are in through the office into the school itself. But the part that's a little bit different is we thought that it might be nice to extend the feeling, the invitation of the school out to sidewalk and out to the bus. So at the elementary school, we're proposing a canopy, taking advantage of wood, because of where we are in the state and where we are close to the Ad and Rundex. Middle school's a little bit tougher, because your existing office is in the back. Even though this is a nice entry, doesn't really go anywhere, we're proposing a new movement, create that same kind of secure vestibule with a door into the main office, and then you get buzzed in on the main office. And then, to make that look similar to what we're doing at the elementary school, there's actually a little bump to create the vestibule and carry the canopy out. Similar approach. And whatever we end up lighting on, we'd like to do it in a way that we carry a feeling that Candary's happy with through to all the different buildings. Primary school, same thing. Create the secure vestibule with a door into the main office. Create a canopy, a bigger canopy that works with the scale of the building to invite people in. With that, I'm going to pass it back to Matt to talk about the building.
So this is just a first look based on what we've heard and seen about your concerns right now. As we move forward, if you were to select SEI, this is something that you would get. Obviously, there are going to be a lot of ideas, a lot of input that comes in, and a lot of feedback out. One of the things that we like to do is modeling. We like you to be able to have a visual of the kinds of solutions that we're looking at, and solid solutions. That's what we would put together. You would have, essentially, what we've talked about for prereq is coming in, partnering with you, and really taking a, you know, taking some risk on that prereq with getting you to a successful vote, because it is a, it's a very important step to getting the project. If we don't pass a vote, we don't have a project. And that's one of the things, one of the areas that we can really help out is by really putting everything we have on the line for prereq. So you'd get a lot of visuals, you'd get a lot of public information in order to put that out there.
We've got a good marketing staff that can help up together videos or backpacks offers or newsletters.
Mailers, anything that you need along those lines. And then, again, SEI, when we started out, we started in one of our first jobs with Skylerville, Lansingburg. We're still in those districts 11 years later, and that's very important to us, is to establish a relationship and to maintain that relationship over, you know, lifetime of the firm, really. So we really wanted to get to a point where we could engage with you and answer any questions that you have. That's, I think, key.
Scott, you want to go first? Do you have any questions for him? Not so much. All right.
Okay. I was just wondering, in other presentations that we've heard, in terms of the vestibule, you talk about a transaction window versus a door into the office, and I was wondering what your thoughts were about, you know, you're proposing doors as the last. I was wondering, you know, what you're thinking.
It's a philosophy question on how the district wants to approach it. I think the door is a little bit more welcoming than a window that you're kind of standing in front of, so that's why I put that approach into the designs, but it's whatever we end up deciding on as a team.
And some districts have a transaction window, and they have a door that you can buzz in. Oftentimes, when people are coming into the district, they are heading into the office. They're not going to be heading straight out into the corridor and then off on their own anyway. So at the very least, it's good to have a controlled entry point, and transaction window's nice if you want to make sure that if someone is signing out or signing in, they can be buzzed right straight through, but if it's a parent, you may not want them just wandering down the hallway. So control.
Yep. It's all how you feel about how you want to address people.
We have a lot of districts that just do a transaction window. But that actually, you know, a mother with a bunch of brownies coming to the transaction doesn't always work. They still have to get around a corner and in a door, because a lot of the bank teller will do the drawers sometimes, and that can be, those can be limit what you can really put through there.
The other thing we didn't really hit on at all...
Yeah, small brownie. Little brownie.
We haven't talked at all about seating associated with the lockdown, because sometimes people kind of have to wait for somebody to get to the door, so there might be a need to have a couple of seats with any scheme you need to vote.
So this is, what would be normal for us to do in this design process would be to work with your team and the user groups that, you know, for each building, you know, principals, and then if you have a safety committee that might want to be involved in that decision, I mean, it really is important to take all of that, all of that information into consideration before we really come up with a solution. We also are in some school districts where they don't want it to feel like it's a sterile, secure lockdown entrance, even though we do need, we do need security in the entries at schools. So there's a lot, there can be a lot, a lot to think about, absolutely.
Any other questions, or?
Okay.
So can we ask you a couple of questions?
Sure.
What are your next steps? Do you have a timeline for how you're moving forward?
The Building and Grounds Committee is going to be meeting a week from Friday.
Okay.
And we'll be discussing the presentations and trying to come up with a recommendation to the whole board.
Okay.
So we're not going to sit on this for a long time.
Okay. And then, overall schedule, is there a planned referendum date for your whole command?
Not yet.
Nothing yet? Okay.
We would definitely recommend that you vote on a capital project between November and February, or, you know, or May potentially, but oftentimes, you're right, you want to keep it as isolated from your budget vote as possible. And November gets you far enough away from tax considerations of voters, and then February gets you, you know, people aren't thinking budget vote yet, so that's a, that's a pretty good rule of thumb for successful capital project votes.
Has anybody talked to you about the process to get to the referendum at all? There's a, you've probably done it before, board resolutions.
Yeah.
Is there going to be any student involvement with the project? I see you've got a student on board. That's something that we welcome and try to encourage, not only in on the design meetings, but we can create shadowing opportunities, no matter what grade level we're talking about. We can have people come to the offices to see what it's like to be an architect or an engineer or civil engineer, depending on what people's interests are. We've shared CAD plans and Revit plans. Revit's a type of CAD that generates 3D models. We've shared those back and forth with technology classes, so there's a lot of opportunities to help people with scheme and sharing all themes.
Could you give us a few examples that we might visit of secure entrances that have different levels of fortress mentality?
From welcoming to, you know, I mean, what you would discuss.
In Lansingburg, which is Troy, basically, not too far from here, you'll be able to see secure entries that are pretty much exactly what we're talking about here, where you come into a locked, secure vestibule, there is a window there, and there's also a door into the office from that vestibule. So if you're a student and you come in, you might just get buzzed straight through the next set of vestibule doors. If you're a parent, you know, you're probably going to head into the office first and maybe wait, or do whatever your business is, or sometimes they'll have someone come down and escort them to the classroom if that's where they're going. So that's a fairly close, that's a fairly close project, but I can tell you that we are, for you, in the sort of the capital district, we have probably a half a dozen different secure vestibules in different schools that we could certainly get you a list of, and if you want to see them, we can make those arrangements, but all different sorts.
Another one that's close by that I worked on as part of a different firm is the Rissley Centers for the District. We addressed the high school and elementary just, and then similar kind of thing is what we talked about here, where walking into a vestibule to lock down, and you have to walk into the main room.
If we couldn't make a road trip...
Photos?
We won't talk about road trips.
Send some pictures?
Maybe some photos, if you would. That'd be great.
And actually, we do that in the initial design process. That's something that we do very, very often when we're having the user group meetings, planning on what we're doing. Oftentimes, we'll bring a PowerPoint with 30 different secure vestibules just to get a taste test, where you're going to say, hate that one. That looks good.
A video. Even doing a video of it might be helpful, because then you can, you know, someone could be going through and someone could be videoing how that process works. So that could be helpful if you can't get there. A video might even be better than photos.
Visuals are great, and when it comes to getting the public to understand what you're doing, visuals are great in terms of getting the word out that way as well. So, you know, that's, that is pretty much what we do.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
So what are the parks?
They're just fidget boards.
I don't remember why.
Yes, fidget boards.
We do occasionally use that.
That is good.
Right. That would be when we were in sports.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you very much.
You pull a seat.
Is that on?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please be careful of the cars.
Thank you.
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 Please be careful of the cars.
Thank you.
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 Sorry to interrupt, appreciate it.
Excuse me, could you just leave the one about the track that I used?
I'm keeping all of them.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Peter.
If you have any questions about track, too, just give me a call. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are.
We go down.
We're going to see her.
Oh, comments.
Why do you want to?
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Mall overalls.
You throw your sense of home away somehow, but you're directed to these guys.
But I like that the doors are there, because then we're trying to get in.
We're having a thought, we're having a thought already.
If it just came to you, you'd rather be able to give them a recommendation, and I really wanted everyone to have exposure to.
No, because someone did.
This is a lot of intent.
I found a soul kind of assignment.
It's finally...
I think that would like a buddy.
It's good that.
And, you know, I thought I was calling to the building around somebody first, we discussed with Gary, because she would have some insights.
It's a burden.
I totally agree with all that, yeah.
So, and then they'll come back, and then we'll have the discussion.
It must be.
It's a pretty good.
Yeah.
Okay.
First one.
Absolutely.
If you wish to, we can put it on the 27.
Okay.
So for a discussion, you'll be part of the meeting.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
What time is the meeting next week?
Building's around?
No. I'm sorry, it's not next week.
Seven.
Seven.
Oh, the 26. We're going to talk about that.
Yeah, I knew it.
No, it's a separate event.
Yeah, I can't remember what.
We'll talk about it in any instance, yes.
Okay, at this time, we'll have questions and comments from the floor. Mrs. Van Uzen has a list.
Kathleen Mauerman, please.
I know it.
This is a lot of intent.
And you know, I thought I was calling to the Building and Browns Committee first. We discussed with Gary.
Oh, totally agree with all that, yeah.
So, and then they'll come back and then we'll have the discussion.
If you wish to, we can put it on the 27th. Okay, so we're, we're getting to a discussion. You'll be part of the meeting.
What time is the meeting next week?
Building and Browns?
No. I'm sorry, it's not next week.
Seven.
Oh, the 26th, we're going to talk about that. How's that meeting?
Yeah, I knew it.
No. Both of those are separate events.
Yeah, I can't remember what.
That's what we're getting decided. We'll talk about it in a minute. Okay, at this time, we'll have questions and comments from the floor. Mrs. Van Uzen has a list.
Kathleen Darman, please. Try something new. We haven't been here in a while, though. We're signing up and we're doing it in order.
I feel like we should all get up and stretch, actually. I'm Kathleen Darman. I think you all know me, but I'm here speaking as a parent of a junior going to be senior next year. I also have a student in college who had a wonderful education here, so thank you for that. And my questions are regarding the class rank policy. So I have four distinct questions. And you may ask, why am I asking these questions? And it is because of scholarships. If my daughter is thinking about going into biomedical engineering or biomedical science, and she could be eligible for a New York State STEM scholarship if she's in the top ten percent of her class, not the top ten, but the top ten percent. So it matters. Also, there were two scholarships she got out of our counseling office. This passed about a month ago. And it asked, it says, can, it must be a junior and be in the top ten percent of their class for both of them. So even things coming from our school has percentage or class ranking on them. So it does matter with, with scholarship money for specific schools as well, because I've been through this with my older daughter, scholarships from the particular school itself, not our, can hear scholarships, but scholarships from the school, it does matter. And so that's, that's why I'm here. So my four questions are, my first question, will the new class rank policy that was established for this current year, these are current graduates, be followed for next year? And will there be any changes? And I recognize that there was a lot of time and effort and a lot of people spent, I'm sure, a lot of time making the new policy. And I understand that the ranking procedures were done as fairly as possible. So is the same policy going to hold true for next year? And I think that the students should know this and make sure that it is the same. And if it isn't, what are the changes and so they know upfront. My second question is, will the classes be semesterized for the seniors for the 2017-18 school year? The school, the students had to sign up for their senior year classes without knowing which classes were going to be semesterized and which weren't. There were some that were designated semesterized, there were some that were designated not, and then there were some that were still questionable. A lot of them were new classes. So they've signed up for the classes, but they don't know if they're semesterized. So I think I skipped my third question, but will, will they be semesterized? I don't think it's, I read the policy and it's not in the policy that says that they are being semesterized. So I don't know, was it a trial or are we, are we going to continue to semesterize them? And that leads me to my third question. If they are going to be semesterized, how soon can we get a, we meaning the students, how soon can they get a final list of which classes are being semesterized and which aren't? So they can make an adjustment to their schedule if need be. I know my daughter's peers had a discussion when they were signing up for the classes, if they were going to be semesterized, if a class wasn't semesterized, why take it as a senior because it wasn't going to count for them? Now, I'm sure it does count for them, but it wouldn't count in the ranking. So it is something that they're, they're thinking about and they're wondering. So as a parent, and we plead, I would hope that as soon as possible, we can get that to the students, which classes are going to be semesterized and which ones aren't, so they can make the decisions whether to change their schedule or stay with their schedule. And my last question is, when is the cutoff date for the add-drop classes for this current, in, this incoming year, the 2017-18 year? So if they signed up for a class and they find out it isn't semesterized or it is, when can they add it or when can they drop it? Or if they signed up for a class that's no longer being offered, when can they add or drop another class? So there were four distinct questions you may not have gotten, but I have them written down for you.
So do you have any questions? So now our job is to, my job is to put this off on somebody to answer all that. And we're going to talk to Mrs. Lenz, if you haven't already, about these questions because this should have gone to her. We will bring this all to her. Most of these are coming straight out of guidance. If there's anything that Mrs. Grimshaw needs to clarify that's coming from guidance, I would say she will get to you.
Yep, you're going to sign this?
Yes, along with Ms. Blieson.
So when, when we were talking to Mrs. Lenz, she did give us a list of classes that were semesterized and some that weren't. But then the unknowns, the new ones, and I believe Ms. Blieson sent me back a very nice email, thank you, about one of the new classes, but it was still kind of yet to be determined. So that's my question, when is it going to be determined? And then when can they decide whether to take it? Thank you.
All right.
I'm Jen Field. I'm here as a parent and I'm asking, as Kathy and I have, we're discussing these questions, if I could also get a response to those questions. And I just want to reiterate on her second question, talking about whether or not people, the classes were being semesterized, something that I just, a statement that I want to make. All classes that seniors take should be semesterized regardless of what they take because otherwise it's discriminatory towards kids' interests. And I don't use that term lightly, but it is true because you have kids that are in different areas and have different interests and are at different levels. And I think that everybody should have an opportunity to have their classes count, whether they're in a tech class, a music class, an AP bio class, a business class, a home and careers class, that all of those should count because we are not determining the pathway of the kids. The kids are determining their own pathway. And so we should be assisting them with that. And so I think every class should count. So this way, they all feel validated. Because if they go into a class and like, oh, why bother because it's not going to count, that shouldn't be why they take the class. They should be taking the class because there's an interest and because it is going to be helpful towards their journey past high school. So all of the classes, regardless of whether, what it is, should count for those kids. So that's my, my question, my, or my reiteration based on that. And the other thing was on the classes and when you were making those decisions about them, I came to a board meeting last month and asked about class sizes and determination. And Ms. Grimshaw, you very nicely said that, you know, you were looking at about if a class had about seven kids or less, less than seven kids is, I believe, what you said, then that class probably wouldn't be offered because you would need more students to be able to do that. And so my children, who would be two, both signed up for AP Psychology. And unfortunately, I, I find it hard to believe that there weren't seven kids, but based on what they said after talking to their peers that signed up for it. But I was told when I went in to discuss the schedule with our school counselor that it was going to be ten or less. So those numbers just don't add up. And I was just wondering, because that's an AP class and, you know, there are kids who are going into psychology or sociology and anybody who's going on to college is probably going to take a psychology course at some point, that would be an important class for them to be able to take. So I'm just asking you to look at that and see, again, with those numbers, to make sure that the community is getting the same information. So there isn't a discrepancy because I don't want anybody to, to feel that way, administrative or parent or student. So that is it. Thank you.
You usually can get seven to do. So I was answering, but if you get in, Nina might, but let me check with Nina. It may be a very simple answer.
Right, I'm, I'm sure that it is. I'm sure that it is. But also, I guess along that line is the idea that, let's say you have six kids that are signed up, then let's see if you can get a couple more. You know what I mean? Because if they know that it's going to be capital or who is going to be teaching it or whatever, that they might, you might be able to recruit some, is, is my point. Or whether it's AP Psych or Anatomy and Physiology or Global Positioning Systems or...
Problems solving.
Proms. Sorry, GPS.
It's close enough.
But you know what I'm saying?
We do invite teachers to go out and, and talk, and they do here at the high school, they have ever since I've been here. They go out and talk about the classes that they're offering or they may offer. They talk that up with the students. The program planning is really based on student interest and what the students want to do connected to their career pathway. So we do have both of those things going on.
Great.
Okay, I'll get back to that.
Thanks.
We're going to rename that class.
Sorry.
It's all right, you're fine.
Okay, next we will have our student representative report.
All right, so a couple of weeks back, Mrs. Grimshaw got me the list of the five characteristic, characteristics of a good candor grad. And their life, life skills, communication, collaboration, problem solving, responsibility, and accountability. And she asked me to find some, some ways that the kids would learn, would like to learn and ways to help more people get to that level of a candor grad. So I asked around a little bit. And for life skills, I had a student say that it'd be good to have a class or section of a course on how to do taxes and also maybe balance a checkbook. And I feel like that's very, that'd be very hands-on for that aspect of it. So I think that's how they'd like to learn about life skills and such. See, well, there's a good example. A semesterized course on personal finance, which we kind of do that with financial math. And so, yeah, there's life skills. We got responsibility and accountability. And I, I really think that's, that's, that's kind of hard to teach in this day and age. And I, I really think it's leading by example that people will, will learn respect and responsibility and accountability. And like also positive reinforcement for those who do, do, are responsible all the time instead of just positive reinforcements for those who aren't always responsible. But what they do, when they are responsible, they get rewarded. I think, I think the person who's always responsible should also get rewarded in that. So positive reinforcement on both ways. For problem solving, I got a student saying that I think we're moving toward this already with a course like GPS and also with all the project-based learning that we've had. And I think that project-based learning will also help communication with presenting and everything like that. Collaboration, Star is doing an excellent job of this, but people still sit out of the activities and you can't have, you can't help that. There's just going to be some stragglers around always. A good, I think a good way to help with collaboration and also teamwork is maybe volunteer community service group to enhance not only pride of candor, but only also to a public community and work with the team on how to tackle some, some struggles that we have in the community and to help those out. And I also talked to some of my, on a different note, I talked to some of my friends who were at Science Spectrum down in East Hill today. They had a great time with it and they said it went pretty smoothly.
So I was just wondering, there are some schools that have a community service requirement for graduation of hundred hours, hundred fifty hours, two hundred hours.
Right.
Did you discuss something like that with any of your peers?
No, I didn't.
Well, I would, I'd be interested to, if you could, to see what people would feel about that.
What feel about that?
Anything else? Okay, next up we have the Policy Committee. We met last Friday, continuing to review policies. We, oh, we don't have anything to break down, do we? Not yet, we're still working on some wording on some of the policy fifteen-ten and thirty-three-ten. I think we finally have all the wording, wording, I think it's up for final review before we bring it to you. In this three thousand session, we're trying to finish that up. There was one that we're up for final review of, two is thirty-four-twenty-nine discrimination and anti-arrestment. And then kind of along that theme, we jumped to the six thousands. There's a couple in there, there's two, there's a seven thousand, all with equal opportunity, sexual harassment, equal education opportunities, that kind of stuff. So we've reviewed those. There's some new wording that OMC Bozey's, that is, Eriwan, sorry, is recommending for a lot of them, just to make sure we're including everybody, especially the wording about, you know, who is on that list to, or on crusade, who's involved in any kind of harassment or situations. Anything else? I don't know if we have another meeting. We'll have some for final review probably next, possibly?
Yes.
We're going to take, so much fun going through the conference. It's amazing.
I remember.
Yeah, don't worry, your turn's coming, my friend. Scott, did you want anything else to add?
No.
Okay. We'll have some next time, I think. Next we have discussion items, the HFC Bozey's Administrative Budget Vote and Board Election. Go with that one?
We just, we need to sub it, we need to sub the time, we usually late seven forty-five, seven thirty, seven forty-five, if that's, we need at least a form, the candidate profiles are there for you to look at, and the Bozey's budget.
That's Wednesday, the twenty-sixth?
Wednesday, the twenty-sixth. All the, all the districts have to vote that day. Yes.
I can be there seven thirty to seven forty-five. I had a question though, do we, I know we have to vote, do we have to vote for two?
Yes, I believe, vote for no more than two.
Vote up to two.
Up to two, no more than two. No, you don't, you can vote, no, you don't have to vote for the two. You can just vote for one.
But there's, but there's two, there's two offices.
Two offices.
Two offices.
Three candidates running.
Right, yes.
Right.
So I'm not sure what that matters to us.
If there was only one vote?
Yeah. Because the other, you didn't discount somebody else's vote, right? Exactly.
Right.
You're throwing away a vote.
Right. Well, you weren't there, Scott, but at the Bozey's annual meeting last week, last week, all the candidates were there and, you know, Stug gave a little short speech about history.
Yeah.
What's that?
Which is basically.
Sorry, not so short. Yes, exactly. Which was really quite nice, although I think the bios are attached, so if you wanted to review those before the twenty-sixth. As long as we can get at least three there, is that?
I can be at seven thirty.
Seven thirty.
I will not be there.
Okay.
Do we have at least seven?
I can be there.
Okay.
And Scott, you can be there, seven thirty? And Scott, if you can be there, seven thirty?
I can be by seven forty-five, I'm fine.
Okay. That's fine. Can you just give us a reminder of the day before?
Yeah, if you wanna come a little earlier, that's fine too, we just...
Um, can you send us a reminder of the day before, please?
Seven thirty, five.
Seven thirty is great. Scott, if you can, you can.
I'll tell you in a second.
Okay. Okay, but you know, give that to us if you can, you know, as long as there's three, as long as we're fine. We need three. Four's better, of course. You know, so... Okay. Excellent. Anything else about that for now?
No.
We're good. Okay.
We're voting.
We'll be voting on candidates?
No, we don't vote that, right, we vote that day.
We'll vote on the candidates that day and the vote on the budget that day.
And the budget, yes.
Okay.
And, and the B O C's budget, you said?
Yes. And they're both posted there.
Uh, and then next we have our budget, um, Scott, revenue, final budget review. Um, he's gonna give us a little bit. Uh, Finance Committee met just before we sat with the architects. So we went over some of the numbers and some of the new information we got. Negotiations went, um, I don't know, I guess I'd say fairly well cause we settled on a potential agreement that we're still waiting on final approval on. So the numbers are in here now with what we tentatively agreed to. Want to tell us what's going on?
Yeah, um, there aren't many changes from weeks ago, whatever we had last. Um, the only... The biggest change was last week, we got another, um, aid run. And our aid was down by two hundred and forty-five thousand because of the original run in January. They had a, they didn't count, like, building, just the building aid. So that's a big chunk, but now that that building aid is really matching our debt expense. So it's finally evening out. Before, we always got more aid than we paid out in that service. So going forward, we're not gonna get as much aid on the building. That was the biggest difference and that's included in here, um, through the revenues. So there wasn't really any other changes from last, from last week or even last time. Yeah, this budget includes the...
Does everybody have those detailed sheets?
No. No, not the de, not the eleven aid details. Um...
If you want, if you, if they wanted, they could get it from...
Yeah, I, you post that, I'll post it to something, I have that in my copies.
I mean, maybe I'm gonna get it, no, I'm gonna be, yes, Ms. Leeson, maybe you can just go make that up.
I would love to.
So we'll get this for you, this is a breakdown of like all the codes and, um...
Well, it's only three, I think, this is what it was about.
Oh, so, yeah, we only need three.
Okay.
Yeah, three copies, please.
Um, so this budget has the, the five retirements with three places for our teacher, chemistry teacher, music teacher. We're adding a U P K teacher, U P K aid for another classroom. And this has the community schools set aside in there that we've been talking about all along. P T E C increases for the students that are going, and we added five for next year. And also I increased the revenue, the B O C's revenue, that we get back on the P T E C kids. So even though we added more on the budget aside, we added on the revenue stuff for the B O C's aid. And then it's just everything else that we've been updating with the way it's been done.
Okay, I have two questions. Um, when I was looking through it, one is, um, Pat Michel is always talking about that, you know, they try to keep the B O C's increases to about two percent. And looking at last year's B O C's versus this year's B O C's, it's a fifteen percent increase.
That's our expense is a fifteen percent increase, but there, what they keep their two percent to is their admin portion. That's what we also have to keep our admin portion at a certain percentage too. So they're not talking about, like, we can add as many services as we want. Our budget for B O C's is not going to only call it two percent.
So Mark, we asked about this last time. And what it is, is as we send students there, our costs go up. And that's not capped anywhere. So the only thing that, you have to literally take a fine tooth comb and go through the B O C's budget. And the things that are capped at two percent increase is only certain items. Then the rest is based on what we're using them for and disguise the limit.
Well, it depends on how many kids in the services, really.
Yeah, so their, their...
Or how many we send to P T E C and, you know, all that kind of stuff.
So this is really a usage, a usage figure rather than a budgetary.
Yeah.
Right.
Right, right.
Um, my other question was, I noticed that there's a line at the bottom with supplies and all, one of hundred seventy-six thousand from last year, what is, what is it called, reason for that?
We've asked for that to be line item.
Yeah, that's, um, seventy-eight thousand of that is the community schools set aside, which we didn't have in our budget last year. We had to kind of find that money for that because we didn't know how it was gonna work. So part of that is, um, community schools, seventy-eight thousand. Um, we added conscious discipline, that's thirty thousand of that. Um, we had some increases for textbooks, for new classes. There's a whole bunch of little things that add, that add up to that.
That's in these eleven sheets, that's in the detailed sheets. Potentially that's, those numbers are in these eleven sheets that we're gonna calculate.
Yeah.
So you can take a look at that.
There were some additions for some, um, um, phys ed supplies for the elementary. Just a lot of small things to add up.
There's notes in these detailed sheets, you're right.
Yeah.
It, it doesn't, to my, I'm not happy that we don't have a line item list of what all those things are because we're a fiduciary and I think that's a problem. So I still have that discomfort, which we've talked about a few times now, so I, I'm at the same...
So the format, the format, this format is insufficient.
Yeah, it'll show every, the, the detail will show all the increases, but you just have to...
You have to then do the math and figure out what, what is each one of these things in here based on the comment. So I, I just think when it comes to financials, we need to really be thinking about transparency. And we're not making it as transparent as, but...
So in particular, we can, I'm not really sure how much we wanna break it out further. I mean, every, every one of these codes probably has subcodes, you know, that break it out further.
So this is the breakdown for that hundred and seventeen eight thousand, right? I don't know what they were, were they handed what?
Same thing we have, yep, exactly the same thing, yep. So maybe Leah, you can, um, just for everybody else's sake, the stuff that's under, shouldn't say stuff. The categories that are under supplies, contractual, other would include, for example, what codes? Could you break it out on these pages?
It's all the, um, elementary, middle school supplies.
Which is page you got right in front of you?
Yeah.
Just to help everybody else.
Page six.
Okay. So this is all considered other, we're gonna call this other, just to call it something.
Page eight.
Okay. So, okay. Some nine. Not necessarily.
Some, some are nine, yeah.
Some are nine. So it's in there, it's just...
Not necessarily...
Yeah, there's a lot, a lot of codes.
In one particular place.
So perhaps there is a different or better structure that the board would like us to... This is, consider this is the first time we've done the line item with the notes in it to give that detail. Um, if it's a little unwieldy, it would certainly be helpful for us to have a sense of what would be a better structure.
Myself, I know I, I don't really need to know all the details about all the different lines of the budget, but especially when there's a significant increase year to year. It would be nice to kind of have a list that would detail why we were seeing that increase. Um, you explained quickly a hundred thousand dollars of that hundred seventy-six, but it would be also nice to know what that other seventy-five thousand, or seventy-four thousand dollars is as well. And, um, you know, it really doesn't, you know, while this breaks things down, it doesn't really tell me what is in that particular thing. So just, just have a list of what, what that, what, what's involved in that increase.
Or maybe with dollar amounts and not just the less.
Correct, right?
Yeah.
I mean, it would just help us to kind of evaluate where, where things are coming in. And the same thing even with the B O C's thing, when, again, when we see such a significant increase, it'd be just kind of nice to have a list of what, what's accounted for.
Right, you know, is it more kids, is it...
Yeah, the three biggest B O C's increases were special ed classes.
Or so many could just break down and say special ed increase is, you know, a hundred and twenty thousand and, you know, uh, you know, the ag, P T E C or the other P T E C, some of that increases in there.
And then the other services are a hundred thousand of that, so...
Well, so, you know, just so we're like, oh, it's not, what are we doing?
It would just be nice to know that stuff.
A little more detail.
Yeah, in a, in a different format than, than this.
Send this, yeah.
Now, that's okay, many additions to this, possible. Sure, whatever, I just wanna know, I just wanna get it, if we're going to do the work, then let's make it in a format that...
And I think, I think it could be a response to our questions, you know, I, I don't think we need each and every item on the budget. But, you know, for, when there's some question we have, I think that would be a helpful format to, to explain them for us. You know, so...
Yes, sure.
To know, to know what we're looking at.
Absolutely.
So I think there's also some other things that we should discuss at the parable budget. In the Finance Committee, um, I feel from a fiduciary perspective that budget is assigned to items. For example, we have a science teacher. We have so many science teachers, we have a budget for that science teacher. Said science teacher goes away, then that budget doesn't automatically remain. And it should be determined, what is that, what is that going to be used for and discussed? Do we agree that we should reallocate that money to something else? Um, we've, we've discussed this about a few different positions in the Finance Committee. And, um, I think there's different feelings about that, that's the way I would say it first, and, or perspectives. And, um, I think we as a board need to discuss that so that we're clear. When a position is vacated for some reasons, maybe we don't need, you can take, we have several different examples in this year, for example. There should be a discussion around what happens with that. Is it okay that it's reallocated to something else without, you know, a discussion about that real allocation? Is it, um, how, how do we look at that and feel about it? And how do we want to see those discussion points from a budgetary perspective, I think is what we need to discuss. So specifically, for, um, we have a teacher that is not coming back. And we've decided that that position would be used to have a different type of teacher. Correct? In the budget assumption, correct?
As far as I know, yes.
Right. So what is the person, what is the person's position going to go to, just so I don't make a mistake?
The U P K four expansion.
Okay. So then we should discuss the U P K four expansion versus, because that really is a new budget item because you had a teacher that was teaching something that is going away. We're not replacing that teacher position to what they were doing. So really, the budget discussion is about what's going on with U P K four and how much money's being allocated to that? And do we agree with that? Because I think there's a whole set of discussions that occurs with that. What's the enrollment for U P K four? What was it last year? What is it projected to be this year? How many signups do we have? I don't think you can just assume, well, it's okay to reallocate a position. There should be discussion around that.
I don't know that that's necessarily the board's discussion because we don't know how many kids are coming into the district that are forty years old. That's an elementary position and maybe even a special ed, not necessarily a special ed, but I mean, much more important what's going on, especially with the younger kids, you know? And they have an idea of who's coming and whether there needs to be an expansion or not. Same with science, you know, I mean, we have to have somebody that's certified to teach the class. And when we have a retirement, um, maybe it's not an automatic, but I think we, we have to have somebody that's certified to teach whatever specialty it might be in this building, you know? And so I don't think it has to be a discussion from us that that has to be replaced. That's a legal issue probably for students, you know? Um, we'll approve those, that's the standard.
We do, that's what executive session is for.
We're approving a hiring of somebody, we're not approving a position. A position has to be there, we don't approve a position for a science teacher, for example.
You may create, you may, you do approve the creation of new positions.
Correct.
For a specific, for a specific...
U P K four is a new position?
It's a new position, right.
So we're approving a new position or we're approving a teacher for...
Both, you would create and appoint.
Correct.
Based on a recommendation. I, I think what Scott's talking about is a process piece, like what does the, how should that discussion look like? How do we put structure around it so that information is brought to the board? I'm gonna try and see if I can summarize. And that there's a conversation with data that supports it.
Because otherwise, we're playing a shell game with money and we're supposed to feel comfortable about the money piece. And we're supposed to be saying, we're comfortable with how this money's being spent, but this happened and we're not aware that this happened.
I think it's a timing issue too, like we have to have this budget done.
I totally agree, I'm not blaming, I'm just...
So we have to put that in.
Right.
We're pretty sure it's gonna happen, but, you know, everything's all in the air, so we have to put it in.
For, for some, that's absolutely the case, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But the point is, we should have a methodology to say, we understand how those dollars are moving and we're making comfortable decisions because honestly, budget being there doesn't mean we have budget next year. And if we don't figure out a methodology to discuss that, we're just making a bigger snowball. That's problematic. Those should be conscious decisions.
Can I, I just would like to say, I don't believe that's a...
I, I just think that, you know, those should be conscious decisions, not unconscious things that are happening.
Correct, and I think they are, I think the piece that's missing is the, the data and the structure for the conversation. That would, that has not always been the way we've handled it. And there's also good times when we have, and I think one of the things is, we have a lot of moving parts all the time. Because we talked about when we got the U P K three grant, what that meant for U P K four. But we need to have a structure to put it in so that it, it stays in that bucket until a decision can be made.
Right.
I mean, that's how, that's how I see it, I just...
I don't disagree.
Yeah.
It just has to be addressed. It can't just lay and whatever happens, happens. I don't think that's the right answer. Because we are spending money then on something that's really new. And that should be something discussed and determined. And I think the U P K four is a really good example to talk through, right? Because I think there's some serious things we should discuss and say... Because I think there's some serious things we should discuss and say, is it right to have a second class? Is it, how many people do we have signed up? What, what investment do we want to make into that program? There's a whole bunch of discussion that should happen.
And some of it, we.
Oh, it has, whether we were part of it or not.
No, no, some of it did before, we did, but we didn't come back around to it in the budget cycles.
Exactly, there's no money allocated to that today.
When you, when you put, when we accepted the UPK three, UPK three grant, we talked about what that impact would be moving into the budgetary cycle. Where I can see it would be more helpful would be to put some stuff around it. So I'll say stuff would be things like projected enrollment and the fiscal investment and what that means.
So just to take that as an example, should we outsource it? I don't know, because I don't know how many people are coming. Should we have a second class? I don't know, right? And that's a budgetary discussion.
Right, and you have to have those numbers.
I, I'm not saying we don't, I'm just saying when we, as a finance committee, to me, those are financial decisions
Yes.
that haven't been discussed at a finance level.
Right.
Right, and just, the budget is just a plan, it's just a plan at this point, and of course, things could change, they usually do. And then we decide, you know, where we have to move money or, you know, it, it changes all the time. So at this point, it's just a plan, we hope to have that class, maybe we won't be there, you know, so.
In the term, can you tell us what you've done to maybe even make us think that we need a second class?
When we accepted the hundred fifty thousand dollars for the, for the pre-K three, and that is something that's contracted for the Full Mont Action Agency, we knew that we were bringing in eighteen three-year-olds, and that we then, for a full-day program, and right now with Mr. Bowerman's UPK four class, that's half-day. We would hate to have a three-year-old have been educated with us since January for June, and then not receive a seat in a lottery for UPK four. We want to make sure that we capture and serve every three-year-old and a four-year-old class. We also realized that our half-day program is a bit antiquated, because with a full-day three-year-old program, to then go to a half-day four-year-old program, didn't make a lot of sense. And so we have, have been having planning meetings, and I should put more information in my board notes about those, but we do leave that to the Full Mont to discuss.
That'd be great, because then we know that there's something going on, it's just not, hey, we just came up with.
And I know it's been discussed.
Right, but, right, but I mean, we're not necessarily aware of that, yeah.
When I, I guess Scott, what I'm thinking, I, I'd like to know if the rest of the board would find this helpful, is, what I just wrote down was like, in the budget development process, to have a structure for proposal for new initiatives, that has some tactical factual information, that has the process piece, and then has the potential dollars attached to it.
Right.
That the finance committee can then look at as a package of other new things. I mean, I think the exciting thing is, is we are trying to do some new things.
And by the way, I think pre-K is a great thing, right? But it's just a great example to talk through this.
To, to have a, a, a specific structure in place, and if, we certainly absolutely can do that, if that would be helpful to the board as part of the budgetary process. I see this as a process piece and an initiative piece.
I do too, I do too.
Right, and not just this, but if we, you know, when we get retirements, and now we start rethinking how we might.
Yes, it's a proposal, I call it a proposal.
Yeah, that's fine, it just can't be, from a fiduciary perspective, it can't be assumed that something here rolls to something there.
Although maybe you just have to have the data to support it, so that the board can have, and have a conversation.
Right, have the conversation about it, right? I think we have a few of those this year.
We do.
So I think they need to be addressed.
Yeah, I need to put it in board notes, that would be, is that okay with everybody for the time being?
I, if I may make a suggestion.
Sure.
I think that that's a different communication than what this process is, that is being suggested, only because you want to make it more formalized, and, or it would head to the transparency in our board notes, that's a lot of information. This is really, how are we, and all the work that we've done with everyone, looking to use our dollars in new and more exciting ways, and what's the details around it?
And absolutely correct, and that's public information.
Yeah, initially, yes, there's no reason why not.
Our voters should be able to weigh in on that and say, you know what? We think that's the right way to do it.
I think there are ulterior to things like, well, have new offerings in high school.
Oh, no, absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah.
And we have, we know a gap has been technology support. We've made, we have a new method to do that, because we have a retirement in that area. So what's that all about? So we do have a few of, okay, I, maybe that's the good news out of all this, is we have, we have some new things, but we don't have a process. So let's get the proposal process going, and see what that might look like. So I guess what, if, what I would ask the board is if you have any specific information that you would like to see included in a proposal, if folks could get that to me, then I could develop a, a structure around it, and then start to put some of those things in there.
I think part of the problem is that we need to know what some of the questions should be, because we don't know what's on the change.
Well, but no, it's, it's really bigger than that, it's just what would you, in any new initiative, or something new that's on consideration for budgetary purposes, what should be the information we should be providing to you? Not, not details, this is about a, we'll fill in the details, but I want to make sure the categories or the, the general questions are what you want.
What's the purpose of the initiative?
Okay.
How much is it costing? How long are we committed to it? I mean, those are budgetary discussions that really should happen, right? Are we signing a contract for four years to do this? You know, those kinds of things should be a part of that. I think anytime we're talking about swapping headcount from a place, one bucket to another bucket, that should be discussed, because what makes that bucket more important than a technology bucket? Or name anything you want, right? We should discuss that, where should we invest that? Because really, that's a reinvestment to some new direction that we could make as a district. And we should talk about, well, what's the highest priority one we should make? I don't know, it might be safety in the middle school, it might be, we should discuss that.
Discussion starting about, you know, December, you know, as things are going about, where do we even look at this UPK four change? I mean, it's been months and months in the making.
Well, when we got the grant, we started talking about that.
I mean, that was months ago, and maybe it was, it's been in discussion for a long time.
But it didn't come back around in this structure.
Right.
And I think that's what Scott's point is.
Yeah.
The conversations have happened, but it hasn't been formalized.
It's gotta turn into dollars now.
And now, and now I was.
And this is the time to do that, right now.
Well, not right now, it's, it should have happened a month ago, maybe.
But you know what I'm saying?
We should have been talking about it in the finance committee, maybe a month ago, or more, even. Okay.
Okay.
I, I understand, I got what you're expressing.
And we have a lot of them this year. And that's not pointing to anyone being right or wrong, it's just we have a lot of them, and they should be discussions that we make conscious investment decisions on. Five people ones, yeah. Maybe, I don't know, any animal.
Well, not, not, some of them are just, and I have five initiatives, but some of the, some of the staff replacements are just retirement replacements, because you have to have a chemistry teacher.
Yeah, some, some are, right.
Right, some are, but, so I have, I have, I have five, so, okay.
I asked, just so the rest of the board knows, I asked about our safety discussion, because we've had that a few times. I asked whether that was built into these numbers. It is, supposedly, we have enough money in this year's budget to spend to put the sidewalk and change the doors, so that we have a short-term solution to the middle school.
Well, we have, the board hasn't decided, and maybe we can have Gary come back, we had talked about two different options.
Okay.
You had mentioned the sidewalk, we had also mentioned changing out that vest, just putting in, fixing the doors in the entrance to the middle school now, and coming in that, and coming, using what the current entrance, so there needs to be a decision.
I'm sorry, say that again, then.
Two things, you had suggested, one option would be a sidewalk.
Yeah.
And that was, Gary took a look at that. The other, the other option was to look at fixing those doors at the current entrance, and creating a vestibule in there, and, and securing the second set of doors as well.
So using, using a camera system?
Yes, and upgrading the camera system.
Okay.
So just upgrading what they have now and securing the second set of doors. So right now, you get buzzed in, and then.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember, when you get buzzed in, what's after that?
It's just an open door.
It's an open door, but they're not locked.
Okay.
The concern is, and again, I, I think if, again, what we should be, what we need to do, week for twelve, we have money in this year's budget. So to practice this, the proposal, would be to look at what's the cost, Gary has what's the cost of the sidewalk, what's the cost of the doors, what's the pros and cons of both. We have, we have concerns about the sidewalk going around the outside of the building, only because then if you're walking all the way down that building, there's a whole exposure on the exterior.
Okay, so yes, you're exactly right, I think that's what this would look like.
Yeah, but we can.
Here, we're addressing safety, here's the two options we have, here's the cost of them, here's the pros and cons.
And we can do that.
Do you want to put it in the budget? Which one do you want to put in?
Right, and right now, we actually have the expenditures in sixteen, seventeen, so it's not related to this budget.
Correct.
But we can still run that, the board can still run that process. It'd be great practice, in addition to others. If the board would like to do that. Okay. All right, so we'll do that, sixteen, seventeen, middle school safety option, so anyway, so yes, they're in there.
I'm just wondering if there was any more clarification from the state on the community school.
No.
No. It's part of the general foundation aid. I suspect they'll ask us to set it aside like they did last year.
So we already have.
So Leah already has.
We already have.
So it would be for the same purposes, we would still, we'd be able to maintain the crisis counselor, which is right now part of that community schools aid, and then use it for our community education program, which we would want to expand, because so far, it's been not successful for the goals we set, which were ten courses throughout the course, throughout the school year, for this year.
For the headcount discussions, did you want to put that on the next board meeting?
The head.
The UPK for the six-one-one, you know, those discussions that would be on this proposal list that are going to be.
We're gonna ask you to.
To the board, or to the budget.
Yeah, as I say, we're gonna turn that over to the rest.
Twenty-seventh agenda off.
Yet, we have a lot of things coming on here for twenty-seventh agenda. We have three presentation, well, three things on the agenda, three presentations. We also wanted to circle back around to see if we could connect with Elmera High School about their semesterized high school. We have presentation from the curriculum coach, we have a PBL presentation from the high school, and also the NAVIA's.
Strength Finders.
Strength Finders, the new guidance system at the high school. But we can shift some of those around, like, the board's agenda is up to the board.
Budget has to come first, we're hitting a deadline here.
Well, the twenty-seventh is, is actually, is after, and it has to be adopted.
Right, either the budget has to be, either the, a budget amount has to be adapted to, it has to be adapted by the twenty-first.
Right, and this is the last time we meet, between now and.
Then we need to discuss some of this.
I don't know, we can, they're not prepared.
The only thing that has to be adopted is the dollar budget, is the amount of money that we're gonna put up to vote. That's what we have to adapt.
So these are still really tentative, but you still have to put a number on them, have to. Well, not tentative, but fairly solid, we think.
These, these are, this is, every year for the past four years, we've gotten, we've improved the preciseness, like every year we keep trying to be more, and more precise with our numbers.
So do we have the enrollment numbers for UPK four?
I have. So when we met with Full Mont on Wednesday, they have a self-assessment they just completed, they told us there was over, it was over a hundred and twenty-three and four-year-olds. If we go, if Mr. Bowerman's UPK class goes to full day, he can only serve us eighteen, which even though our numbers are down this year, it would mean that there would be at least six to eight would be on a waitlist if we don't do a second class. Both state ed, when we had our state audit, and Full Mont that we met with, have said that if we offer full day, our numbers will increase. So we hope to have eighteen and sixteen, or eighteen and eighteen, in those two full-day programs.
Okay, so we're pretty confident we can full, fill them or nearly full?
Yes, our, our UPK three full-day class started full, on opening day was full. What we have learned is one of the challenges of running half-day UPK is that.
I totally get that, and, yeah.
And that was part of the decision-making process.
That makes total sense. And for the socio-economic changes, pre-K stuff is really important, I get that. But we're making investments, so we need to make sure that we're using those investments, right?
Yes, we will get to the detail.
Well, no, that sounds fine.
Oh, I want to practice the proposal, because I'm very intrigued by that. I think it brings great clarity, that's all.
So the six-one-one, we disagree, disagreed in our finance committee. I look at, the six-one-one was a class created for a specific purpose. And we don't have that purpose, next year, we've made that determination at this point, I know the world changes, I get that, right? Particularly in this arena. However, that teacher was also hired for that purpose. When the position was approved, and the hiring was approved. So reallocating that needs, again, I think, some justification, right? Otherwise, we're just shifting money around, because we had a very specific thing that we approved, and we went after, and we invested in, and now maybe that's not the right thing to do. So we shouldn't just assume that the investment.
Send special ed teacher in, in our district, with the change in special ed population.
Speak to the programming that is required for our, our students, our student, our current population now. We are, based on the needs that were identified during the meetings, we're still dating those meetings. We have several students that have been served, for example, this year in a special class setting, not behavior-based, that are, we are taking out of that special class, of that very confined type setting, into a, the general ed setting. So we have greater need for programming. So now you're taking a group of, say, six students, a couple of those students have been identified as truly having those needs to maintain their special class. But other students need to be reintegrated back into the gen ed program. So that is another teacher right there that needs to provide those services for those students. So the amount of need is there for those students. Now, we do have, yes, we are sending our two students to a different setting, out-of-district setting, because it just wasn't enough for that class. We're also looking at, our ENL services have been not so fantastic.
What's ENL, SARS?
Yeah, that is, English is a new language.
Okay.
We are currently receiving services for students from a provider for the BOSI's. Attendance getting there, the quality of service provided to those students. So we are looking at ways to support them that doesn't involve getting BOSI's, and that could be provided by our special, by a teacher here. And that could be the case where we have a special teacher, so that would offset the cost of that service that is so far.
What's the cost that we spend on the ENL?
It's about forty thousand.
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight thousand.
Forty-eight.
Yeah.
I was resting on it.
Listen to the BOSI's teachers, what you're saying.
Yes, yeah.
Right, so we're paying forty-eight thousand to BOSI's for the service.
For the service.
So our BOSI's bill would go down by forty-eight, but we keep a teacher that's entry-level, so it's gonna be about a wash.
Yeah, roughly.
That's, I think, the level of discussion that needs to happen, right? With facts, so that we can intelligently say, okay, that makes sense, right?
Absolutely.
That's all that I think really needs to be in this, with some facts, and say, okay, we're, we're switching this around. And if there's a different change of program or strategy, then tell us what the change in program or strategy is.
And I like, we have, like, these are, Mrs. Grimshaw is crazy about the strategy and the protocol, and she's.
I just opened a form.
She's on that like white on red, so absolutely, and so honestly, those are conversations, it's just not something that, that has been in this form.
And, and they should be, because when we try new things, that's part of the education process that we're supposed to be watching over. Because when we try new things, that's part of the education process that we're supposed to be watching over, right? So it's okay to try new stuff. And sometimes it doesn't work. Okay, great. What are we gonna do next? Right? How are we gonna try to address it? Not a problem. But here's where that has to happen. The, I had some others that I thought were important for us to discuss as a part of budget. We talked all about the middle school issues. What are we putting in the budget to help address it? This is the time, right? Where is that initiative? What are, why aren't we talking about it?
You wanna give an update on the committee work?
Um, so we had a couple of presentations from people for conscious discipline. Um, when trainers were coming in to work with East Hill, they came and would make presentations to interested staff members. And then we also had Michelle and Eric come in and be able to do kind of a conscious discipline overview to one of our faculty meetings to be able to give that information to the whole staff.
Was, was, just, I'm sorry, I don't want to interrupt, but was that well-attended? So that the whole staff really got educated?
The whole staff was at a faculty meeting, which is where the staff is required to attend. So yes, the attendance was very good. Um, so, and Mrs. Grimshaw was there and staff was able to ask questions. And Mrs. Grimshaw was able to add some questions and perspectives to different pieces of the questions that were asked. Then after that, the group of teachers that have been working on this as a committee got together and discussed conscious discipline as an option. The feedback from the staff was that we were not in a position to be able to pursue that at this time. So we are currently exploring other alternatives.
Okay. Do we need money for this?
Right now, what I would say, based on my experience at the middle school, is that in, most of what we need right now is not necessarily a program, but professional development. And we already have funds built in for that. How I see right now where that committee is, is that they need to do some more exploring. But in the meantime, while they're doing their exploration, there's the opportunity for professional development. And that, we already have that built into the budget. It's part of what we do with teachers anyway.
And part of that is gonna be educating on the aspects of conscious discipline so that the teachers understand the skills and the strategies the students are coming to us with. So that would be specifically focused next year in...
It's important that it's part of transitional.
Right. It's gonna be for our sixth-grade teachers to be able to have that understanding so that they understand, if they're seeing a particular behavior out of a student, that it may be something that is conscious discipline really.
We do have a few teachers at the middle school that are interested in, even if the whole school isn't quite ready yet, we will support those. But again, that's through professional development. So we have already talked about, Michelle's already given me information about how we can accommodate those few teachers who want to move forward.
Then the other thing we talked about when this all came up was, a lot of that issue is going to the high school next year. Do we need to address something?
Nope.
I'm, I'm not trying to be a pain in the butt. I'm trying to, this is the time for us to do that.
Some of those things we've been working on now. And so one of the, can I talk about Brian? I mean, we're working on providing education for people now, not when the kids get here, I guess would be my point. So we're using some of the funds we have right now to bring people in that will help increase that education for people.
Great. We're preparing. Wonderful. Is there anything you're gonna need?
No, I think it's more about that. I think it's more about educating our staff and helping give our staff strategies. One of the things I've been looking at most recently is a concrete comment. How do you work with unmotivated, sometimes unwilling, sometimes disruptive kids? How do you not get engaged in the power struggle? How do you say the right thing so that you don't disengage students? And for some of our faculty, that's just a, a mental switch because we have a different group of students in front of us. So in my opinion, it, it's more about educating people, giving them the tools, and then constantly helping them, reinforcing the use of those tools. Because it is gonna be a brain switch.
We need to take a five-minute break. So if you don't mind, everyone, I will take a five-minute break. We need a motion, right? I'm gonna make a motion.
Check it.
Thank you, all favorite. Bye.